Appreciate that.
Okay.
Leave something for the rest of us.
Yeah, one thing I did want to remind everyone, somebody talked about enhancing the economic viability, and another speaker commented that we weren't providing necessarily, or he wasn't aware that we were providing housing for, and I think that was a choice of words by Mr. Reiner. But we've spent a lot of time doing a lot of extensive study about what will make our community relevant going forward, and that informed all the decisions about Bridge Street and the direction that we've taken. And with regard to, you know, what young people want, we've also, our staff has spent an extensive amount of time, our economic development team has spent a lot of time with our corporate residents who essentially provide everything for our residents here and enable us to have the community that we have. And those corporate residents have said that it's absolutely necessary to attract the next generation of workers to have environments like that. And we also went a step further and actually interviewed a lot of the young professionals who are employed and with these companies, and what would they be interested in. And again, all of that has informed the direction that we're taking with regard to Bridge Street, and I did want to point that out. And that is all I have. Thank you, Mike.
And with respect to that, there's a lot of, we have a lot of young folks over at Crawwell on that particular project that are there because they can walk to the grocery store, they can go to the dry cleaners, and every other facility that's available there.
Yeah.
So that's a good case in point, and I feel really confident that that's going to fill up and fulfill that need, so. Anybody else, Mary Lee?
Well, as you know, I was very critical the first time you came forward and felt that you needed to do a lot of work on these plans, and I still, I think there's been terrific progress, but I still don't think you quite have it yet. To me, the buildings, even though you've used different materials and you have a little bit of architectural interest, it's just not enough for me yet. It's too, it looks too, maybe it's the squareness or the linear look or something, I don't know, but it's not uniquely different. I don't really want us to look like Columbus, downtown Columbus. I think they've done a wonderful job, but they really do sit in an urban city, and we don't. So to me, we have the opportunity to be more interesting, less conservative, and even though the rest of our community has a particular look, it's sort of like Miami University, who is built out all looking the same, well, we purposely did that in the building that we've done so far in Dublin. But this was a unique area of our community that gave us an opportunity because of the population, really, it was going to be able to serve to experiment a little bit differently. And so for me, this doesn't do that yet. And so that's just, you know, my opinion. Now, sky bridges, I'm very conflicted about this. I don't personally like them, and I think that we've seen even in downtown Columbus and in other cities where, over time, they're removed. And I think the open sky bridge has a better, you know, feel to it because you're still out in the elements, so to speak, than the closed ones do, and I think the closed ones are the ones that probably have been torn down more frequently than the open ones were. But I would like to see pictures from around the country where this has been used effectively. I'm a visual person, so I do better if I can visually see what you're proposing. So I'm not totally against it, but I'm conflicted, as I stated. I do want to ask the staff about the transportation discussion that has gone on by a couple of the speakers. This was a big issue that we have talked about routinely over the years in this area, and it does appear that we have the cycle opportunity and car and pedestrian, but what happened to the ability to have buses or some other, more along that line, even if they were small buses and not the large Cota bus type style?
Sure, I think this type of project makes those conversations easier to have and to get off the ground. They provide that critical mass and density that makes, you know, more transit options feasible. And in fact, something among the many details that we didn't have a chance to get really into tonight, the applicant is thinking about transit. In fact, one of the plans, I think even notes where a bus stop could be, obviously no details associated with it, so we can't really give a good, you know, recommendation on that. But again, as this project advances, obviously, you know, in the short term, we have to work with Cota, you know, we can't just put a stop down and assume that that's going to be the right location for it. It takes a lot of coordination, but I think, you know, we've really worked with the applicant and let them know that those are, that's something that we haven't forgotten about, and we do expect to continue to see with the project.
Well, you know, maybe my vision of it isn't a Cota-style transportation, but more a streetcar. You know, when you, the C bus sets downtown now, you know, that's what I envision this area is more attracted to. I mean, if you're trying to have interest for both the younger and the older, so you have an integrated living arrangements there, and your outdoor activities and all the other things that we talk about, then those kind of, you know, transportation make more sense than a Cota bus. I mean, that's just boring, you know?
Sure.
So, you know, you want to be able to jump on and jump off, and if we're really trying to encourage people to be working in our community, you know, in our community, then those kinds of transportation options, I think, would even allow them to leave their cars more there rather than getting in their car and drive over them to the parking lot at their corporate office here in Dublin. So I would, I'd like to see, you know, I know you need more space for something like that, but then maybe you need less buildings or something, you know, that, so that you could incorporate more of the transportation options that people might be able to enjoy, really. Because that's what we're trying to do. Again, I go back to, we're trying to make this area uniquely different. We don't want it to be what everybody else is doing, and I know we've read in the newspaper in the last 10 days, you know, where New Albany now has got this going, and Westerville's got this going, this whole, you know, suburban-urban kind of thing, and I haven't seen their plans, so I don't know what all they're incorporating. But we want the, whatever Dublin ends up being, that it is uniquely different than what anybody else has done. And so it's those kind of features, I think, that would make us different, you know, because there's nothing overly unique about these buildings, to me. You know, they're, I don't know, deluxe apartment buildings or something, you know, but they're not uniquely unusual. They're unusual for our community, but in the long run, I'm not sure that they would be viewed as unusual for the population we're trying to draw here, because we need to have more space and more figuring out what are the gathering spaces that the population would be wanting to use even within the buildings. And I know we're not speaking about the internal use of the buildings today, but that's something that maybe later on we would learn a little bit more about, so that that might be an attractive use of why people would want to move there also. So, you know, I'm not going to speak to the, all the other issues that other council members have spoken to, because I don't need to be repeating any of that. But for me, I just feel like you've made a lot of progress, but it's not yet what I, I wish I could articulate what I envisioned, I just know what I don't, you know, that I see, what I see is not what I envisioned, that's a problem. I know it doesn't help you very much, but thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lee. Rick?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I guess when you get toward the end, a lot of it's already been said, and first off, I want to thank you for all of your efforts to date and as we go forward. Mary Lee, I agree with you. When I look at these buildings, and I know you've put a lot of work into them, but, you know, when I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I kept thinking gateway features, gateway features, gateway features. And this is a new gateway for us. And I'm looking for something, and like Mary Lee, I'm probably going to have difficulty articulating what that would look like, but I'm looking for something that just jumps off the page, and I don't necessarily see that. With respect to materials and things like that, I suppose that takes place at the next step, Rachel?
Yes, yes.
So, but, you know, but I'm looking for something a little that stands out. The word's been used, a destination place. Well, in my mind, what's attractive? You mentioned there's going to be a lot of restaurants. Well, okay, that means a lot of cars that can come from somewhere to get there, because you're listing 371 units or apartments right now, and if there are, most of those are single, so where are all the other people coming from? They're going to be using these roadways. So, you know, that's a little bit of a concern of mine. When I look at the roadways, the cycle tracks and the sidewalks, I'm not convinced that the way they're set up now, I see conflict between bicyclists and pedestrian. I'd like to kind of see some other ideas to put a little safety barrier between the two, because we do want this to be not only walkable, but, you know, I guess cyclable as well. The Skywalks, you know, I think Mary Lee's right. What I've read is, in a lot of areas, they're tearing them down, but I guess if I lived there, I may not want to carry my groceries over during the snow or the rain. So I'm kind of on the fence there. I'm not quite sure what the answer is with that. The transit options, you know, this was supposed to be the new 21st century hip place to be and new ideas, and in my mind, transit options is one of the top three things that we need to be considering. Rachel, with respect to tonight, with what we vote on, because we're setting all the parameters, and if something is, the building's too big, or the setbacks aren't enough, and we can't do these other things we're suggesting, then what? I mean, what we set tonight is what it is.
Yeah, this essentially gives the applicant the guidance they need to move forward with those greater levels of detail.
So if there aren't enough room for transit ideas and things like that, it's, I guess you'll be saying sorry about our luck, right?
Yeah.
You won't say it that way.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, I think transit is something that we've been considering, and I think the streets, again, just I'll reiterate the point I made earlier, the street sections themselves, the rights of way, we've really tried to strike that balance of having enough space for flexibility and everything that needs to happen in there without the whole street being way too wide to no longer feel urban. So that's something that, you know, we'll have to keep working on.
There are other blocks to work with, though, I mean, that are forthcoming, and we also know from our past work that we really don't dictate the Cota.
Well, and I'm not necessarily thinking of Cota, I'm thinking there's other options.
Yeah, and I like Mary Lee's description there a little bit earlier about a shuttle or whatever you called it there.
We talked about those things almost 20 years ago at a Transportation Task Force and also on CSAC of other options for public transit other than, you know, the big buses.
Agreed. And we have more and more areas in terms of connectivity, you've got the OU campus now, and, you know, as that continues to grow, there will be a need to move people from one place to the other. I think it would, and I really don't think the expense is something that we could not overcome here.
Can I ask a question along those lines, if I may, please? Rachel, is it possible that you could lose some on-street parking and provide a transit stop?
Absolutely, yes.
So it's not like the opportunity's completely gone, it's just reconfiguring that public space in such a way that it would accommodate, I mean, I know, obviously, you know, we've talked not a full-size bus, but a smaller circular.
Yeah, a smaller version, it's a whole different deal, yeah.
So we've got, we have provided for a lot of on-street parking, and it strikes me that you eliminate some spaces and then you gain a transit stop potentially.
The only thing I'd be really careful about, you know, it's not just giving up two parking spaces, you know, you've got them coming in and them leaving, so it takes up quite a, if you look at even a small, you know, size bus, it's still going to be quite a bit of parking you'd end up giving up.
I think we can dig into that. Let me have Rick finish his comments. Yeah, it might be difficult to retrofit that, I don't know. But, you know, it was interesting that in your subsequent phases, you're talking more about condos and apartments. And, you know, I know that Central Ohio has built a lot of apartments here in the last five years, so are you suggesting that maybe we're past these bubbles about ready to be in the past in the rearview mirror, and condos will be the new demand?
I think condos in certain locations will certainly pick up. Obviously, as we've talked about before, the condos on the west side have been very well-received, but we also know that this wouldn't be, it wouldn't be suited, well-suited for the types of people that want to live there to build these as all condos. That's not the market that we're searching for, it's not what all the studies say is needed for the next 30 or 40 years. It's pretty overwhelming data in that respect, so it wouldn't be condos. We do believe there's a condo need there, and there will be condos, so you can add that appropriate mix, so there can be some for-sale options, but certainly apartments, and all the studies back this up, are, need to be a predominant part of that. In relation to the amount of apartment building, certainly there has been a lot of apartment building, but I don't have the graph with me, but we're just now reaching back to the levels we should be building. We haven't even caught up yet, we're not even really close to catching up for the years of 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011, where there are very few apartments built. And certainly in Dublin, not counting Tuttle, which I don't really consider that to be Dublin, a lot of the Edwards properties, but Dublin, as you guys well know, there have been very few to know apartments built here, so Dublin has a tremendous demand for that.
Well, a lot of those people do work here, so, you know, I guess what I'm looking for, and, I mean, I'm not here to debate, you know, whether we should have condos or apartments, you know, that sort of thing, but I'm just trying to understand the market.
Options.
And options, because, you know, I'm being told by, you know, the city lawyer and others, the finance people, that these buildings under these tiffs and the like, we're going to be, you know, whatever we come up with, we've got to stay with that for 30 years under this tiff, and I don't know what 30 years is going to be like, you know, and so I'm trying to look for options with respect to those, you know, those type of housing needs.
And we follow a lot with what the studies that have been done, and even our own studies that we commissioned for this particular development, talk about what those needs are over the next 30 years. And no one can exactly predict what they're going to be, but you can only go on based on what all the studies that are being completed today. And I do just want to make quick mention while I'm up here, if you don't mind, I had a meeting today with a business owner in Dublin, and I have the great fortune, and we've all had the great fortune to meet literally dozens of business owners, both office users, restaurants, and potential tenants, both residential for rent and for sale. And the office user I met today, a tech company located in Dublin, but they also have an office downtown. Both leases are due next year, and their decision is simply this, it's either move everyone downtown or into a development like Bridge Park. It's not an option to stay in the current residential, or excuse me, the office-only development. And his comment to me, that decision's not being made by him, that's being made by his employees. They're simply saying, he said, "If I want to be able to keep these employees, I need to get them in a walkable urban area." We then followed up further and had discussions about the rents at the developments, because there was a comment made that these would be unaffordable. We actually walked specifically through the rents for each type of unit, and his comment, and he'd already had these conversations with his tenants, or excuse me, his employees, and agreed, he and his partner said that absolutely, these would be in line with what they're used to paying already, just in different markets, but now they're, they get to live and work in the same location, so that would absolutely be affordable. And he went on further to say that he expected out of his employee base, which currently is about 40, he's expecting to grow to 100, that about 50% of those are renters right now, and that their group, employee group continues to get younger, and he expected that to grow to about 75% of the employees would be renters. And out of that, he expected a large majority would just live in the same building or in a building next door.
Yeah, I hear a lot of that. I have a client who has offices in a few major cities in the United States, and the most popular is Seattle for the younger people coming out of school because of those very reasons, you know. I just, looking for flexibility, 30 years is a long time, you know. I hope to be retired and playing golf by then, but, you know.
I will just mention, from a quality perspective and the way these are being built, they could absolutely, from a physical standpoint, be converted to condos. That is not an issue whatsoever. Whether or not we have to break bonds and things like that, that's a different story, but certainly from a physical perspective, I think.
And typically, the ground floor and the second floor of most of these buildings is concrete construction on our podium buildings, which means they are completely flexible, ground floor and second floor. In the case of the office buildings, the hotel, two office buildings, the hotel, along Riverside Drive, all those buildings, you have five stories that are still completely convertible to other uses, just to talk about what Brent did, and build on Brent's comment, that I wanted to mention that.
I understand the waivers. Sometimes waivers are a variation of a theme, sometimes it's actually even raising the bar. So I think the use of the word waiver does not necessarily connote bad or good.
Right.
So I want to state that, and I'm not aware that we have done a lot of bonds over there, so I don't know why that's out in the community, but I don't think we've approved any of those, you know. So the one thing, and one reason why I did not support ordinance 114-14 was for this very reason tonight, because, you know, we were going to do an economic deal, I was hoping that when they came to council that we would, you know, be able to look over a concept plan, maybe a little detail, have a presentation such as we had tonight, and give a lot of good constructive feedback, and kind of keep it, the discussion going, so that at the end of this, we would still, because if I'm going to, if I'm going to sit up here and vote for taxpayer dollars to help support these sort of things, I want to have, I want to see what this is ultimately going to look like. I think that's good business, I think that's being prudent. The difficulty that I, and the angst that I'm having here tonight, there's a lot of good things with this, but there's a lot of things that are not yet, in my mind, I'm comfortable with. But you're asking for my vote tonight, and if I give that vote tonight, then I feel like I'm handcuffed. I'm not going to have another say on this. It's going to, it's going to go to, you know, whether it's Planning and Zoning Commission, wherever we decide it's going to go, and it's not coming back. So that's creating some angst with me. That's all my comments.
Okay, I'll try and be really brief. Most of what needs to be said has been said. I, all in all, I like the change in the architecture, the transitions that you've made, the iterations. I do agree with a couple of the comments, there needs to be more of that, if there's a way to make that wow factor occur, maybe it's curvy, I don't know, I'm not an architect, but it seems like things seem a little boxy, and I know that's kind of the style, and it's difficult to work around it, but there may be some elements that can make that look a little different, or at least a couple of buildings a little different. It's also very difficult, material's difficult, the material detail's difficult to discern on these renderings. Some of the out, the panes that you had showed more detail, where you could see the actual brick and the quality, and I think this is, you know, a big improvement, and I know that we're going to try and make some more headway. There are no bonds, this project, infrastructure will be paid for by the project, that's my understanding. So I don't know where this information comes from, but we continue to hear that out there, and even tonight, one of the speakers addressed it. It's just simply inaccurate. There's a tremendous, oh, I did have the vinyl windows, I had some heartburn with that earlier, reading through some of the minutes from your presentation tonight, I see that, I think I can probably live with that. We may need a little more detail on the R factors and some of the other things, and the ability to use that for cosmetic purposes. The parking area, the screening, there's parking on top, right, the top deck, presumably that'll be screened somehow. I'd like to see more detail on what that's going to be, and I think others have already addressed that tonight. It's really clear that there's a tremendous amount of passion with respect to this project. I think, I think there's some that do not want anything to happen, there are some that have absolutely different visions, and there are many that embrace our planning staff's work on this, developer's view, and I think it's noteworthy that this council has fully embraced this project at every step, and we continue to want to see improvement, and I think we will. And that's really, I guess I'll just close it with that. Tim, you got one?
Just a comment, for what it's worth, with respect to the discussion we've been having regarding transit issues and mass transit, the C bus, you know, that was mentioned downtown, you know, that just stops, you know, in through lanes, you know, at the posted locations, so, you know, it doesn't really require, you know, any otherwise, you know, kind of dedicated space. Yeah, anyway, that's all.
Can you remind us what an affirmative vote means tonight? What is the level of flexibility after that vote?
Sure, for the, for the basic plans, the basic development plan and basic site plan, as I noted earlier, it authorizes the applicant to move forward with pursuing that additional detail. At this point, you know, they're really making sure a lot of the big pieces are coming together and understand what your concerns, comments, feedback were before they really explore, you know, all the ins and outs of the project. So an affirmative vote on the basic development plan and basic site plan allows them to move forward with the final development plan, so they keep out the streetscape, getting those details worked out, and the final site plan, which is really exploring all the last details of the building, exploring different concepts. You know, council brought up a lot of, you know, concerns and suggestions. We also have, as the ART, we've noted a lot in our report, and I also mentioned, we did a very exhaustive analysis based on the code, so the applicant is well-aware of the things that we need to continue to work on, from the form-based perspective, but also from the big-picture character perspective. So, like I said, the next step is the final development plan and final site plan, which are required to be substantially similar to what you're seeing this evening at the basic plan review, but it doesn't need to be identical. If there are things that council would like to see, they could either condition, or just as part of the record, the minutes this evening, we can pass those along to the applicant for next levels of review.
Okay, anybody else?
It's council's pleasure. Do you want to move on these waivers? Do you want to do the two at a time and three at a time? Do you want to take them individually? Greg, you brought that up earlier. If not, hearing any, I'd look for a motion to approve the development plan of waivers as proposed, and that would be the minimum block size and the front property lines would be waiver one and two under the development.
I would so move.
Is there a second? Ann?
Sorry, Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have the basic development plan, we need a motion to approve or disapprove? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Move to approve?
Second.
And there's a second? Ann?
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Reluctantly approve.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
I'm going to say approve, but I am really focusing in on what you said, that, and you've heard what our comments are. So I would not be, in the next round, would not be approving this if you came back with the exact same thing. You know, I think that we spent three, four hours here tonight for a reason, and you need to really seriously consider all the comments that council members made and that the citizens made when coming back to the next stage. Thank you.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes. And that takes us to the basic site plan. We have site plan waivers, there's three proposed, that would be the front property line coverage, the horizontal facade divisions, and the ground story height. Is there a motion to approve?
I would so move.
Thank you. Second?
I would second with the expectation that the applicant and staff would work together to get that first level with awnings delineated appropriately with awnings and, you know, details as the tenants are fit out.
Very good. There's a motion, there's a second, Ann?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
I'll say yes, but I want to echo what Mary Lee said just a few moments ago with respect to the expectations of this body as we go forward with this project.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
And Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
And on the basic site plan, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Okay, we have the next, next issue is the required reviewing body determination. We're required basically for the final development plan review and for the site plan review, conditional use master sign plan applications. So I don't know if council wants to discuss this, I know this is a really important part of what we're doing here tonight.
I would move to designate Planning and Zoning Commission as the required reviewing body.
Yes, I would second that, but I'd also want to ask the question, because, I mean, this code's new to all of us, and there will be an economic development agreement that goes with this. Is there, the way the code is written, or because simply by the fact that we are going to sign off on an economic development agreement, can we, whatever P&amp;Z, I know P&amp;Z will do a fantastic job on this, but since we're up here voting on the money, is there any way we can see this? Because I know under the code at this point, once P&amp;Z does the finals, that's the end of the road, and I don't want to take...
You want another bite? No, we need to see.
I don't want to take any authority away from the Planning and Zoning Commission, I have the utmost trust that they're going to do a good job. I mean, we, most of us were there for a number of years, and we know how hard they all work, but, you know, if, but there's been an awful lot of comments made here tonight. One, we hold the purse strings, I think we need to have some kind of little look at it before we sign off.
Well, right. There is the development agreement that's coming up, and certainly gives you an opportunity to give more direction. You've been given substantial direction tonight that Planning Commission, if so designated, could use.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
I'm going to say approve, but I am really focusing in on what you said, that, and you've heard what our comments are. So I would not be, in the next round, would not be approving this if you came back with the exact same thing. You know, I think that we spent three, four hours here tonight for a reason. And you need to really seriously consider all the comments that council members made, and that the citizens made when coming back to the next stage. Thank you.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes. And that takes us to the basic site plan. We have site plan waivers. There's three proposed. That would be the front property line coverage, the horizontal facade divisions, and the ground story height. Is there a motion to approve?
I would so move.
Thank you. Second?
I would second with the expectation that the applicant and staff would work together to get that first level with awnings delineated appropriately with awnings and, and, you know, details as the tenants are fit out.
Very good. There's a motion. There's a second, Ann?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
I'll say yes, but I want to echo what Mary Lee said just a few moments ago with respect to the expectations of this body as we go forward with this project.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
And Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
And on the basic site plan, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
I'll say yes, but I want to echo what Mary Lee said just a few moments ago with respect to the expectations of this body as we go forward with this project.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
And Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
And on the basic site plan, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
I'll say yes, but I want to echo what Mary Lee said just a few moments ago with respect to the expectations of this body as we go forward with this project.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
And Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
And on the basic site plan, motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Ann?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
I'll say yes, but I want to echo what Mary Lee said just a few moments ago with respect to the expectations of this body as we go forward with this project.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes.